Open meeting at six o'clock. Do we have anyone here besides Josh Garcia?
Rainy.
Hi, Rainy.
Still think we did okay. I hired a PM for $176,000.
All right, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 17th, 2021 as written.
Should I go?
Any discussion?
No objection.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
All right. Oh, we got some appointments. Let's see. Oh, sorry. I forget. We've got Don Brainerd to zoning, Peter Miffler to, thank you, historical. Katie Milford's husband? Jim Cronholm to zoning, Maggie Zaco to rec. Oh, she's gonna, oh, shoot. David Waldron as highway superintendent and emergency management. Nick, I'm gonna say this wrong.
Cusino.
Cusino for plumbing and gas. Theodore Cusino for High and Near Valley Alternate. Josh for town administrator. Josh for emergency management. Am I hearing a motion?
If I was a linguist, I would say that was Cusino and Cusino. It's just sometimes your son got mad at Dad for the way it was spelled.
Right.
I make a motion that we appoint these people in A through J as written.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm gonna pass them on to you. And then we'll go back to Eric. Next up, we have review and take action on the contract between the town and City Point Partners through a PM. I think we voted this one and then rescinded it last time because we were waiting on finalized contract version
Yes.
from the attorneys.
Yes.
So what kind of changes are there, Josh, if any?
Well, so there's two versions, although I'm looking at, Joanne's not here. There's supposed to be an edited version that has all the
I have this right here.
That one says Kero PM.
Kero PM, edited contact for signature.
Are there markups and lines? Or that's probably the clean version.
This is, yeah, I don't see anything.
Oh, no, what's going on?
Signature version.
Yeah.
You got the clean version, but I have forwarded or we're supposed to have printed out.
Okay, I've got, oh, with edits, I've got a digital copy here, I think.
You got it there?
Yep, so let's see if I can go through.
What's the cost?
Not seeing any markups in this, but I could, if I change it to
The awarding authority shall pay to the owner's project manager in an amount up to $45,628.
Yep, so that's for phase one pre-design.
For phase one, and for phase two, $92,957 for a total of $140-ish.
Yep, around there.
Just gonna see if I open it in Word?
Oh, and they did it as fixed key. Look at that.
Stop that. Stop it.
Chief of Stacks, prepare. All right, where is?
All right, hold on, sorry, I'm trying to, it's making me sign in again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See, it was under a town of Blanford. This is a lot of steps to open a document.
Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
You mean click didn't work?
No, I had to sign in again, even though I opened it for my email, which is stupid, Microsoft. I bet Google wouldn't have made me do that. Okay, so we wanna, this is not I wanna see it with the editing marks.
Are you looking at review markup?
It's not, I can't open it in that form. It's only letting me, all right, hold on.
Scroll down.
Hold on.
If you scroll down, you'll see that the edits
That's just a big old chunk of Chinese low-jacked hardware you handed me.
Yeah.
Wait, I can do it. Now I'm determined.
You know that, right?
That's what I have.
Give you time for a new one.
Wanna get me a new one?
Sure.
No, that one works just fine.
Of course it does, because it downloads all of the data that you have as a town administrator and sends it back to China.
You think that's what's going on?
I know that's what's wrong.
Obviously, because who doesn't want to know the ins and outs at one point?
The IBM ThinkPad Lenovo chipsets were created by Huawei, and Huawei embedded embedded intelligence gathering technology into the
All right, it's not working for me.
They put into manufactured devices in China.
Okay, so they took out
Discontinued their use. And they became cheap to buy on the market for anyone else.
I'm not saying, Eric.
Oh, they took out words like "all."
Yeah.
I mean
Yeah, there was nothing
They added
No edits or changes in scope of what was presented and what you guys ultimately approved.
Well, when you remove the word "all," that changes the scope a lot.
Well, no, it's just, it's, yeah. Like, perform all such services. It's just said, shall perform such services related to project through project completion.
All notices required to be given here shall be in writing and delivered.
2.3, they added the oversight of such work for an additional negotiated fee upon mutual written agreement of its scope and duration. 4.2 They added, after the fee and shall obtain written approval of the awarding authority for incursing such costs, which will be changeable, yada, yada.
They forgot "shall." Oh, there it is.
No, that's still there. They took out a big chunk. On 5.1, after this event. And I mean, I don't
I moved the Keras fund this thing.
Can we move on? Hey, so the motion is that we approve the contract between town and City Point Partners through PM service. Is there a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Who's Eric? Josh? All right, we didn't, I didn't see a executive session. That's okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so motion to table executive session meetings of May 17th, 2021, until next meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we are on to unfinished business. We have a COVID-19 update.
It's basically just a recap. I've got like five minutes with Josh, and I think we're just gonna go ahead with the recommendation, right, Josh?
Yep.
For the 29th, we're gonna, everything's just gonna open up. Josh is, you're gonna send out something to everybody. The only thing, of course, we got is that we have to keep up the cleaning, disinfecting, and the hygiene protocols as well as, as well as the safety standards. They're gonna rescind the large gatherings for indoors and outdoors, so there won't be any limitations. They're gonna rescind the face covering, but there's gonna be a new advisory with that.
Okay.
So where ridechairs, taxis, caries, things like that, you're gonna have to still wear masks, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
And in healthcare facilities, they're gonna ask you to still do that. With that being said, oh, and as of June 15th, there won't be a state of emergency anymore.
Wow.
What?
I feel like we should have a celebration.
June 15th? The state of emergency ends.
Mm-hmm.
That's exciting.
When's the Juneteenth holiday?
Maybe like get the balloons and put them out.
Mm-hmm, I think that's a good idea.
Juneteenth is on a Saturday.
It's the 19th. That's wonderful news.
So, yeah, that was, that was very exciting. So, really, that's, but I still do the recommendation of the, you know, the signage. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that's just to protect those that might come in here that aren't vaccinated.
Sure.
And again, you can't sit there and ask for everybody's little card.
So it's not something we can uphold, but we could certainly post it.
That's correct.
Um, that people, if you're not vaccinated, please wear a mask inside the building. We can post it. We don't, we're not gonna uphold it.
Well, I'm not saying wear a mask.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I think like the social distancing, when you have, I'm not saying like during the town meetings and the things like that, that maybe you have to care, like we did before, you know, put the bag, let's go back to some normalcy.
Yeah.
But if we just post it in the hallway, so that you don't have a group of 10 people gathering, and then maybe you have two people over here gathered, you know, I mean, it just kind of
Okay.
Whether, I'm not saying you have to enforce it. It might just be
Like a reminder to social distance?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, you know, again, it's not an enforcement. It's just, we're open, be mindful of others still. This is still new. We don't know about the vaccine and how long, if, you know, it is active or it lasts. You know, you already know you're gonna have to have boosters. So it's just a project. And that if anybody comes in, in any place, just have people tell them all, in any place, with a breakout with COVID, they do have to contact us, and we still have to do that tracing.
Okay. Okay.
That's, what do you think, Josh?
That's it, yeah.
That's fine with me.
I mean, it's straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think it's a big deal.
It's just how to post it in as few words as possible, right?
I think there probably is some signs you can order that are just
Instead of having an essay on the wall, right, you really just want two pictures that say, no shaming, the maskless and the mask, right, either way, just let people be.
Well, I don't think that's, I think we want to put something that says, like, just please remember to social distance. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, you might just print lock it.
Yeah, I'm sure you could find an image online, yeah.
And put them up, and then again, if somebody feels that, you know, they wanna wear their mask, then fine, let them. That's their comfort level.
No shaming.
Right, right. So whatever people feel comfortable with at this point.
Okay.
Yep.
Everybody's ready to go with the 29th.
Um.
We're more than ready.
We are ready.
Yeah.
All right. Um, next up, we have a Shepherd Farm update, and we actually have a letter. Um, which is
Yeah, it's just, it's a letter of support from, from the board, so we can submit with the, the grant that's gonna be submitted.
So it just says that we're expressing our support for the feasibility study. Um, and that's about it. To help determine our best options, all right. So does this need a vote, or we're just signing it?
Well, in the letter, it just said, you know, on behalf of the select board, just wanted to make sure that it was, it's indeed, you know, supported by the board. That's why there is an agenda item.
Okay.
Otherwise, we could have just had you come in, sign, and not even bring it up.
Night and no sun, it's unlawful, whatever.
Transparency, you know, transparency is critical.
Do you have any other unfinished business for us?
I do, and Sarah's actually on the line. It was go over the, the, the submitted proposal through the procurement for treasure collector services.
Okay.
How many did we get?
One.
Awesome, that makes choices.
I mean, it was anticipated. The model is, she's, it's the only model of its, its kind, and it was, it was put on COMBIES, which is a statewide bid.
Right.
Um, it was put on the goods and services website of, of the oh my God, the state, not the auditor. The secretary is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was posted in the paper, and we did get one person that asked for, that had requested a copy of the RFP, but it didn't submit anything.
Okay.
But Sarah, you there on the line? We can't hear you. You're muted.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I just put, because I'm in another office, I just put mute while you guys were talking.
I just, I, I, you know, wanted to have Sarah present in case you had any questions on where we are, what direction we're going, any, any particular question on what she submitted in her proposal.
Okay.
She can probably even give you a quick overview on her strategy in this proposal, however you guys wanna proceed forward.
Sarah, do you wanna start with just a quick overview of your proposal? Do you mind?
Sure. No, not at all. So what I did was, basically, it's gonna be broken out in a couple of different series, so they asked for to, you know, one year with possibly a two-year going out. And knowing that there aren't very many treasure collectors out there or other people who do what I do, what I tried to do and explain to Josh was that basically, we have to anticipate that there won't be anybody. So there's, the second year includes a case where that might happen, and that's why my bid's a little bit higher for that year, but it also has the opportunity to be able to break it out in case somebody does sign on. It kinda doesn't lock the town in, into one set price. And if somebody else comes on and we, you guys hire them, then that's great, and my contract will train them and produce policy and procedures for that second year, so that way, you know, we've been working the last three or so years trying to build up the credibility of the town and then also the office, and we wanna make sure it's stable no matter who comes in after us. And by working with them side by side, preparing them for that, and then also setting those policy and procedures written in, in place, it kinda ensures the town that it's DLS best practices that we've been working towards all these years.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
So year one is gonna be much of what we already talked about when we met with Sarah and putting the budget together for year one, just like we do with all departments. So it's day to day as we've been practicing today. But we also talked about transitioning out, hiring, whether it's a part-time or full-time treasurer collector, permanent person for year two, fiscal year '23. And at that point, we renegotiate a contract with Sarah for transitional services, so it wouldn't be as much as we're paying her this year, so in case, you know, she might wanna, whoever it is, he or she might want ongoing support for payroll until, you know, they can They might want, Sarah's gonna start doing a lot of work around tax title. You know, certainly, we don't want Sarah to just kind of walk away from it, so it'll be, you know, some sort of transition effort there. I know Sarah's also focusing on some work on trying to get our bank accounts in order, looking at different interest rates and whatnot. So those are just transitional as-needed services for year two and possibly year three for whoever this incoming person is gonna be.
Yeah, the, one of the other options you guys might wanna consider is continuing on, like either in the second year or, like you discussed, the third year, is almost an overview to make sure that whomever sits in that position afterwards is keeping current with everything. So whether it be like once a month, like a mini audit, or just double-checking to make sure the cashbook's going, the demands are being sent, the collection rates are going well. That's an option as well, just to kinda have an overview, because it doesn't take long before things go to the wayside quickly, and this just kinda reiterates, not only just to check, but also to help where I can where there might be some struggles with a new employee.
Okay, yeah, that would definitely be valuable.
Yeah, you guys have got, you guys have come a long, long way, and just to give staff some support, you know, make any new employees feel welcome and know that, you know, they're, they're important in that, what they're doing matters. So I think that's, that's a huge onboarding and retention plan.
So I'm looking at our, like what we budgeted this year for treasurer collector. So we budgeted $204,442. So where does this 105 fit into that? Is that the
That's the treasurer collecting consulting services, as well as the second treasurer's clerk, which we kept it separate just in case, you know, there is an option or an opportunity with COVID happening. We weren't able to hire anybody, and it was kind of a struggle. And then we jumped right into tax title and trying to bring somebody in right now, and train them while we're trying to do all this stuff. Really doesn't make sense and streamline and help the town at all. So that's why we kinda still kept it separate.
Okay, so it's just the first one, two, three line items. It does not include the expense for the tax title legal fees.
Correct.
Do you guys have questions?
Nope. So if you
Yeah.
So if you're comfortable with proceeding forward, I'll, for your next meeting, have a, start wrapping up the contract.
Okay, yeah.
So you can approve it.
This is like her being
Oh, thank you.
Price is right. Sarah Hunter, come on down.
Who would have thunk this, right? For what, three and a half years ago?
All right, awesome. So then next week, um, or the week after, it's next week's Memorial Day. We'll have under active
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it.
No problem, guys. Have a great night.
You too.
Okay.
Do you have other unfinished business for us?
Um, well, the only really update unfinished business, the, the repair on this road over here is, but the strategy is to do it on day one after Memorial Day.
Okay.
Um, from what I'm told, it's to, if they were to start now and disrupt any potential traffic flow for Memorial Day weekend, they just figured it's better if they just started the day after Memorial Day.
So they're starting on the first.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be June 1st to June 7th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be close.
For, for through traffic.
Closed already for through traffic, right?
No, it says that there's a date. We'll be
I know, I, I started up it the other day, and I was like, no!
I just
Long way around.
But that's it.
If you had to leave the road open to through traffic, it'd take twice as long.
Yeah.
Because every time he swung his excavator bucket around, there'd be a wind chill.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then they're done that.
We have a new business besides the expense report.
Well, the only thing I wanted to bring up, Eric and I, Eric had brought this to my attention the other day. My office was just dealing with some overgrowth issues, like along this bench here in the park. Um, continuing to work behind the library building, and also the other side of the stone gate, the, the stone wall.
Is it behind it?
Both sides really.
Yeah, I mean, it's just
That one would be Dougie, right?
Well, this side of the park will be Dougie.
That side of the park's Doug.
But Dougie, you know, he's just doing his thing mowing the lawn, and whatnot. We're talking about the other side of the stone wall.
The town commons side of this.
The town commons side.
The white church side.
Oh, way up top. Oh, God, we talk about this every year.
There was a
Poison Ivy.
It's only because somebody hasn't figured out how to just let loose loads of bunch of crap.
Can we just hire someone? Can we just seek some?
Well, so, well, there was a tree down there, and, and the highway guys, thanks to these guys, they went over there and picked up, got rid of that large tree that was there, and now we just have a bunch of overgrowth stuff.
Yeah.
Some logs laying out in the middle of the park.
Is there?
Some
If we get, if we get it cleaned up, then Tracy Allen does the maintenance of that. We can just ask him to make sure he maintains over, you know, behind the, the stone wall.
Maintenance of what?
He, he mows that little, like, there's like a little plot of grass near the parking lot of the Historical Society.
So what I was thinking was, you know, I can look in the budget and see where, you know, there's funding, and then at a future finance committee meeting, joint meeting between select board and finance committee, we can move funds so that we can take care of the overgrowth issues around town.
Yeah, I would look for even like, I mean, specifically someone who removes poison ivy, because that's, I'm sure, a process.
I think there was also some tree
Yeah, you gotta get the roots out there. It's gonna keep coming back.
Keep mowing it.
I don't know.
You guys are fine with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the goal, if we are to hire someone, is to that, is that
I know the Johnsburg and the Culver, that's his next thing.
Well, I was, you know, I, after we talked, I took a drive through the park, right, and it's like we still have people that use the baseball diamond.
Yep.
Right.
They were there, they were there.
But somebody needs to go in there and trim those trees behind the baseball diamond, because they come right up to the backstop, so now
Is that our property, though?
Well, of course it is, because we own behind the backstop.
Do we?
I mean, because there's a bench and stuff back there, but you can't sit on it, because the trees are growing over.
So that's tree work.
So it's like, yes, go to
What's his name? Mark?
So whether it's tree work or whether we hire someone, but I think our goal should be that whomever we have that does our lawns should be able to take their mower right next to our fences and mow. Right, or, or right next to our stone wall and mow.
Well, the other side of the stone wall, that's not, I don't even know if that's, is that our, that's our property, any of those, that's not Historical Society?
This side of the stone wall is park.
This side of the stone wall is the park. The other side of the stone wall is town commons.
Okay.
To the, to the left, more left.
So we can, so that would be, once it's cleaned out, that would be Tracy, and I can ask John to get up to
Right, and that's, I mean, that should be our, we should have the brush and crap moved out, and trees and whatever, leaners and all that stuff cleaned up, so that when someone mows, they can just mow, and it's a clean-looking fence line, right?
But once it's cleaned up, we need to make sure it's being mowed over.
The other, the other side of the parking lot is a problem, because it gets so wet that it's really difficult to maintain.
Yeah, that's a whole different
I know, that's the Culver issue. Okay, I'll ask John that, and then I don't know if I have information for Tracy. I guess we'll have to wait until it's cleaned up a bit, unless he wants to bid to do it. Do you have his information, Tracy, on to clean up the other side of the stone wall?
Well, my thought was that, or we just, the suggestion I had, I know we appointed Doug as being the, the grass mower for there, but if he wants to take a
We've asked her before, we've had this conversation.
What, like a weekend to clean the fence line here?
No, we, we can't pay Doug to do this, because we pay him out of Watson Park funds.
Well, we can pay him out of a different line, except that he's using Watson Park equipment. That's where the concern is.
Yeah, I would stay away from that.
By the town trust as well. Whatever, okay.
I would just ask Tracy if he wants to do
Let the commission come in and challenge our judgment. We're using the best resources for the town. Let's move on. Right, that, that's my thought, if it's, but again, it's, it's, you know, we have to look at, or do we bid it out, and somebody has the expectation that in two weeks, we want it cleaned out, and it's done. So I think a person with a friggin', what do you call it, a, a chain thrash mower on the back of their, their tractor could come through on it, rock wall, and take out as much stuff and be as quick about it and get it down to where it can be mowed.
Yeah, I haven't looked up there recently. I don't know how messy it is.
You know, it's all those little wood trees right in there.
We'll ask Tracy if he wants to clear that out and fill that.
Does he have the equipment?
I would, he has landscaping equipment. I mean, that's what he does. He does landscaping.
Yeah.
So just ask him if he's interested, and if not, we'll seek elsewhere.
Okay.
He does it anyway. Okay. Okay.
Only because I thought of it on the way in here tonight.
Okay.
I think it would be neat, but we'd have to have a discussion with Mr. Gemolo. That on Memorial Day weekend, it would be cool if the kids in town could go help him put a stone back in the wall, because then it would be their wall.
That's cool. He looks, it looks like it's a big project.
I know, it's a big project.
It's not Mr. Gemolo either. That's not, no, what is your, your son-in-law's last name?
Gemolo?
It is? That doesn't make, wait.
Did we get a new updated
How did I not, I'm so confused. How did I not, I'm so confused.
Mine went to, it was an old one.
Okay, what's confusing?
I thought you married your daughter.
Who married?
Wait. Okay.
Amy's last name was McLaughlin, so she married in McLaughlin.
He's a gemolo.
And he is a gemolo.
Okay.
He's a gemolo gemolo, like a Gemini gemini.
Okay. It looks, how's he doing up there? I, I drove by, and it looked like he was like, oh my god, this is a big project.
Yeah, I drove by today, and he looked.
He looked like he was standing there like, oh god.
Well, I was trying, you know, he's, I, I think there's the issue, right, you're sorting out those things where perhaps a stone fell out of the wall, and somebody chucked it, right?
Right.
And, or a big stone was moved somewhere else, cuz hell, it's laying here in the grass, and we need a doorstop, or, I, I think he's, when I saw him, he was digging and taking the wall apart, right? And, you know, he's just ciphering, how do these stones lay back together, but then he might be ciphering that he could be a stone or two short, and we're gonna have to combine some rocks.
It looks like quite a job. Alright, uh, do we have any other new business?
I'm all set.
Wow, seriously?
Yeah.
So, I don't know who's in charge of that contract, Josh, but if someone would like to call him Josh, and see if he'd be willing to do that, Josh, that would be really cool.
We're talking about Tracy Al, oh, you're talking about, uh, the stone wall.
I thought, though, if it's, as complicated as it appears, to put it back together, he's probably not gonna want a bunch of kids putting rock.
Well, it's only if it's in that, if it's in that condition, right, is he in a position where he could come in for an hour or two, cuz you're talking about parade time, right, it's like a show and tell thing. After the parade, noon, maybe from twelve-thirty to one-thirty, you can come up here and lay a stone on the wall, right, it's just an activity. If he has, if he doesn't have it available, doesn't matter, but it's just one of those things where kids can take ownership to say, I helped him put that rock, and you know, that would tie someone to this town forever, forever.
Yeah, that's cute. Alright.
That's the only thought, if you don't, and if you didn't wanna do it, that's fine too, but if you did, that'd be cool, right?
Yeah.
Till the rock falls on the kids. Then, then that ain't funny no more.
One game's over.
Oh, brother.
Okay, um, are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Um, not to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, roll cover, I say yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Um, we should unzoom us, I guess.
They zoom, they zoom.